Welcome to the Monserrat Port Development Project Town Hall Meeting in the community of Lookout. I am Nerissa Golden, the Director and Editor of Discover Monserrat. And we'd like to start this session today with a word of prayer from Pastor Jeffers.
Heavenly Father, we come to you in the name of Jesus. We thank you for this opportunity to look at the development of Monserrat. Even at this time, as we come, we pray that your presence would be with us. Pray that you would touch each of the presenters, that you would help them to be able to be clear in their presentations, that you would help those of us who would listen to be able to understand what is being said. We pray that even as they would go forward, that your favor would be with Monserrat. And that as this project, in whatever form it takes, Father God, would be a blessing to this country, would be useful to this country, we pray against the hindrances and the delays and difficulties that may come against this project. We pray that this project would be of benefit to Monserrat and to all of us. Again, we pray for each of the persons involved today, or those who have gone above and beyond to prepare for this presentation, that this presentation would be a successful one. In Jesus's name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Jeffers. You may be seated, everyone. The Port Development Town Hall meetings are an important part of the process of how the project is developing, because their goal is that the community absolutely benefits from the project from start until even after completion. So I also want to say welcome to everyone listening and watching online on YouTube and also on DigiCell Cable. Just a little background about the project. The signing of the contract was May 19, 2022. Groundbreaking happened two days later, no, a month later, June 21st, 2022. This project is supported with funds from the Caribbean Development Bank, the UK Caribbean Infrastructure Fund, the European Union, and the Government of Monserrat. There are three key implementing agencies in the project, the Government of Monserrat, through the Ministry of Communications, Works, Labour and Energy. The Monserrat Port Authority is the key stakeholder, and you will hear from them later, and the supervising engineers, Stantec, and the contractor on the project, Meridian Construction Company Limited. So I want to start today's session with the representative from the Government of Monserrat. Today, it's going to be the project engineer Glenroy Foster.
Good afternoon, one and all. Stated before, I'm Glenroy Foster, the project engineer for the Monserrat Port Development Project. And it is my pleasure today to provide updates with regards to the project as we are, as of today, in September 2023. We have seen this picture before, but as I show the picture, I'll let the video play. And the concept that needs to be brought out from this video is that up until the 1st of September 2023 this year, for the most of this year, the waves have been calm and we have not seen any of this condition before. Right on cue, as we always say, September is a busy month for the season. We had some swells and some sea conditions, not as bad as this, but giving us a reminder of what we have been experiencing and what this project is coming to alleviate, reduce, and put in the rearview mirror for the Monserrat context, the Monserrat economy, seafarers, and all persons that would have access and use to the facility. So the key concepts that we're looking at with respect to this project. When built, it's to provide a safe harbor and a drastically safer harbor than what we have currently. We're looking to protect the existing Little Bay Harbor, allow for burthen of various vessels to include ferry, fishing, cargo, police launch, small cruise vessels, all to increase access to Monserrat, increase the financial abilities, and the money-making power of our economy. So the concept allows us to have 130 meter pier with a dolphin. And what that does, it allows us to berth vessels of up to 187 meters to include what would be mid-sized niche tourist vessels and cruise vessels, as well as cargo vessels that ply their trade here and those that have not been able to come here in the recent times. So the key outputs and outcomes that we're looking for is to improve the tourism product. Currently, what we have is vessels that would come to Monserrat and would have to anchor offshore. And provided the sea conditions are well enough, then they would be able to tender to Monserrat. This in itself is a risk. Every time that you move from one vessel to another, it brings an inherent risk. So by vessels being able to dock at our pier, it reduces that risk of transfer and would improve the product in terms of tourism. Similarly, we're looking at vessel handling. Currently, we'd have vessels of certain length in terms of cargo being only able to dock in certain times. Persons that are expecting goods and services through the port sometimes would see their items on the vessel docked for days on end and actually see that vessel sail down to the other side of the Caribbean with hopes that when they return, they will be able to offload their cargo. So by this project being implemented, we're looking to reduce these issues and increase the profitability of business owners and operators in Monserrat. In terms of turnaround time and downtime, within the years, we would know that we constantly experience downtime at this facility currently due to sea conditions, the North Seas in the winter, which would stem from anywhere from October and go as far down as in March. So we would have a lot of missed opportunities and missed calls. And we both know that these times are also our peak times for persons traveling to Monserrat as well as goods coming in. So we have the opportunity to reduce these downtimes, increasing arrivals of persons being able to come to Monserrat, as well as goods and services being landed. The project doesn't just look at the infrastructure, we look at some safeguards. So we look at the environmental safeguards. So we have coral reefs that were in the project area. We know the importance that the reefs would have for our local fishermen, fisher folk, sorry, and to ensure that we are able to have a variety of fresh fish. So we ensure that these reefs are not destroyed, but relocated so that they can thrive and continue to sustain fish so that persons on island that enjoy fish, such as myself, will be able to get fresh fish on a regular basis. Respect to social and gender stakeholders and safeguards. So this project impacts every one of us. No matter where we live, no matter what industry we are affiliated with, this project will affect us. And it's the project's goal to ensure that we do no harm, but do some good to ensure that there are benefits to the persons involved. So we know that the communities that are being impacted will do what we can. We can engage with them to ensure that we see what their issues are. We have opened up a grievance mechanism for persons that felt that they might be aggrieved by the project. Their box is located at various institutions, including the Ministry of Communications, Works and Labour, as well as you can contact any one of the project team if you have a grievance, to make sure that these can be heard. Similar to that, the Monserrat Port Development Project team has partnered with various institutions in Monserrat, such as MAC, the Tourist Board, and the Trade Division, to ensure that our people are ready to benefit from the project when it is completed. It is not for us to say that the pier is built and it is there. We can't wait until that happens to say, what are we going to do? It is for us now, at this point in time, to plan how we can utilize, leverage, and ultimately use that facility for the betterment of ourselves personally, our families, our business, and the country on a whole. Similarly, with this project being implemented, we can see the improvement in sports tourism and nature tourism as we'll be able to have vessels safely dock here, bringing large amounts of persons, teams, officials, so that we no longer have the situation which we had previously, where we have to have games elsewhere that's supposed to be home games for Monserrat. But we'd also have the situation of have persons come in to enjoy the beauty of the flora and fauna of Monserrat, which is the appeal that we have, as opposed to other countries that want to market other aspects. We have a niche market and we need to provide the access to all our persons to come through it. In addition to that, we have the element of this project ensuring that we do capacity building and mentorship for women and young people in project-related industries and aspects, whether they are traditional or non-traditional. And how we will go about that is to ensure that we have a skills gap assessment to determine exactly the skills that we need to benefit from the project and the spillofs that we anticipate. If we expect that it is tourism, then we need to look at how we can improve our tourism product, whether that may be improving customer service, improving the skills of bartenders, culinary arts, hostesses, areas to work with, housing, cleaning, or if we're looking at our industrial cottage industries, for them to be able to leverage the aspect that we can now export, as opposed to only thinking of what comes into Monserrat. What can we do to get things out of Monserrat to a wider market? This project would allow for that because it would ensure that we have a facility, once utilized, to get information out. Sorry, and just to add to that, the fisher folks are one of the most adversely affected persons within this project. And it is pleasing for me to say at the moment that the trailers that were ordered for the fisher folks should be on island by the beginning of November, once the shipping times hold. This would ensure that they no longer have to worry about some of the aspects of their boats and having to store them elsewhere and store them on blocks. They will now have the trailers that are purpose-built for them. As we're talking about social safeguards and women and youth being empowered, this video shows our Honorable Parliamentary Secretary as part of the Women and Girls in Construction Day that was hosted collaboratively by the Contractor Meridian Construction Company Limited and the Government of Monserrat. And we can see skills that were not traditional for our Honorable Parliamentary Secretary, being able to operate a small roller. And there are many other persons that were within this training, within this opportunity, that were able to utilize rollers, backhoes, excavators, and they had a very good time and can't wait for the next one. So all persons in here, women that think that this is something that they might not be interested in, keep your ear out, and the next time that this opportunity comes out, take a gander down and see how you can benefit from it and learn a new skill. You're never too old to learn that skill. You could become the best operator that Monserrat has ever seen, but you will never know unless you try. So this slide will show some of the key updates, the project schedule that we are looking at. The project is expected to be completed by the middle of April 2024. And as part of the updates, I can state that the design is at 90% complete. The contractor would speak a little bit more to that when he gets his opportunity. The dredging would have been 75% complete. We have some civil works, including the causeway, which is approximately about 10%. The coral relocation, which is practically completed, which I alluded to earlier, and the batch plant setup, which is the concrete batch plant for them to produce, use the materials to produce their caissons, approximately about 75%, with technicians coming in to do the final tweaks and commissioning in the not-too-distant future. As I spoke about dredging, we have the vessel, the Elbe, which is the trailing suction harper dredger, which would have completed its work between the 20th of July and the 11th of August 2023 this year. And they would have completed dredging on the main areas with only a few areas that need to be tidied up, which additional kits will come on island to accomplish that task. But the majority of the dredging I emphasize have been completed, which would allow the contractor to continue works that need to be done for the project. And as we have here, we have this 3D rendering of what we, the future of Monserrat looks like. In terms of the opportunity of having multiple vessels berth on multiple piers to provide us with the opportunity for revenue and increase opportunities for our local persons, regardless of what industry they might be in. So we need to understand that whether we are craftsmen or within the tourism industry, that persons traditionally believe the project is geared towards helping, or the fisher folks, each and every one of us can benefit from this project. And it is up to each and every one of us to see what those positives are and leverage that project for our benefit so that we can increase ourselves, our families, and the community of Monserrat. And as always, community progress is our purpose. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foster. Let me also acknowledge the presence of, I thought he was not going to be here, so Mr. Foster is here, Mr. Alison Patterson, who is actually the project lead for the Government of Monserrat on the project. Since he's up front, I suppose later we'll be able to ask him some questions if we have any. Next up, let me introduce Mr. Joseph Agaro. He is the manager of the Monserrat Port Authority and who will have to take care of this project, the pier, port when it's done.
Good afternoon, everybody. So my purpose this afternoon is just to give a very focused view from the Port Authority perspective and the impact that the project would have on the operations of the port. You would have heard earlier from Mr. Foster, the varied... Sorry, better? Oops. You would have heard from Mr. Foster, from Mr. Foster, a much wider appreciation of the various benefits that would accrue from the project. Like I said previously, my purpose this afternoon is to focus very narrowly on the benefits that would accrue to the Port Authority itself and the operations at the port. Well, we'll just do it manually. You good? Right, so you would have heard, of course, that the overall length of vessel that we expect to accommodate would be about 187 meters when the mooring dolphin is employed. Prior to the start of the project, this would have been at the conception phase, the stakeholders would have engaged with the tourism department and would have identified the niche market that they wish to service. And a typical vessel that fits into that niche market is typically about 187 meters on the upper end of the spectrum lengthwise. The next metric that we see here is just a reflection of the actuality on the ground in the last season. We had 30 calls that were scheduled, 13 of which were canceled or abandoned for a 43% cancellation or abandonment rate. Of course, this is, you know, significant. The tourism product is not something that you could, for argument's sake, put on the shelf in terms of, you know, the preparations that have been made by the vendors. If you've got a product, food that you're preparing, you don't wait until the vessel is here to start preparing that. So the fact that we lost 43% of the calls in the last season is significant, not only from the loss of revenue that you would not have got, but of course, from the losses that the vendors would have incurred. The new berth is going to provide a dedicated international passenger berth. The word international does sound, well, presumptuous, but really, in maritime terms. Any voyage between two jurisdictions are considered as international. So tourist vessels calling here for argument's sake, that we consider international passenger call. The reason why we thought it pertinent to put that information here is because most of our passengers, our cruise passengers, of course, are from the US market. And as such, we have to ensure that the standards that we adhere to are such that, you know, we'd encourage the American market in particular to keep calling. The new facility provides for improvements in security, greater flexibility in maintaining international ship and port facility code compliance. On occasion, roughly every two years, we have the US Coast Guard visiting. We also have the Department for Transport from the UK visiting to ensure that the facility itself is compliant with these standards. And of course, like I said previously, with this compliance, you'll be great ability to attract additional cruise traffic. We will have a design draft of about eight meters and as such, we'll be able to accept vessels with larger cargo loads, roll-on-roll-off loads and lift-on-lift-off cargo. In terms of us relating directly to the lift-on-lift-off vessels, cement vessels are calling here for argument's sake. They more often than not tend to call on Monserrat at the very end of their voyage, such that they have less cargo on the vessel and as such, do not require as much draft. The new facility, of course, would mitigate that and improve efficiencies. A vessel would not, for argument's sake, be transiting from Santo Domingo and going down to San Lucia to drop cement off before turning around and coming back up to drop cement off in Monserrat. You know, we'll be able to just fit quite naturally and easily into the regular delivery schedule. The Heliconia Star is the primary maritime asset here on Monserrat for search and rescue. It's primarily on a mooring buoy. In the event of an incident, the marine police has got to mobilize from onshore, get out of the vessel and back. We now will have some space for the Heliconia Star to berth alongside, improve response times for search and rescue operations. The... Something that came about during the project itself, during discussions with the contractor, was the quarry area. I know everybody driving by going down Davie Hill would be able to see the hill that is being torn down at the port. While this was not essentially a part of the project, it's quite significant for us now in that the contractor is able to use the fill material on the project itself, but at the same time, is creating some additional space at the port, which we'll use for biosecurity. The marine police were now co-located with immigration and port health. During COVID, we, of course, would have been familiar with, the port health staff were doing COVID checks and such like, and they were poorly housed. This allows us the opportunity to just improve the standard of accommodation for the port health staff. The biosecurity, we are concerned about invasive species. The fighter sanitary people and the folks from the Department of the Environment, they've got no real accommodation at the port right now. This sort of side effect, for want of a better word, of the port project is allowing us to improve significantly the quality accommodation that we're offering to these various other government departments. Separate and apart to the new facility, we're looking at improved usability of the existing pier. Some of the dredging that was done was not only to facilitate the new construction, but the existing pier, there was some dredging done in that area as well. Since the installation of that facility, there's not been a maintenance dredge and as such, a number of the operations that we used to do in certain areas, for argument's sake, the roll-on-roll-off activity that had to be relocated to the end of the jetty. After the successful completion of the dredging, we'll be able to reuse that existing rural facility on the existing jetty. Doesn't overshadow the rural facility that we provided on the new jetty, but you know, it does give us some more flexibility. Some upgrades that we'll be undertaking, installation of new fenders and bollards. This is just for protection of the vessels that are calling. The Foster would have spoke as well earlier, you know, about the fishers. At this point, we have one pier and it's a multi-use facility. We've got to accommodate everybody, cargo, passengers, pleasure craft, fishers. The new facility does allow us some separation of the activities that are generally carried out from the port. So we'll have some improved access for the pleasure craft, the jet ski people on Sundays, the excursions that run when tourists are here, and of course, a little better access for the fishers. The strictly internal to the port is new cargo handling equipment. We expect to get a number of new forklifts, um diesel for yard use and battery powered for um use in the the warehouse and inside the containers and a telehandler. So the, um, I think I was only allotted about five minutes, which um mo- more than likely exceeded by another five. Uh I was just quickly trying to ramble through uh some of the direct benefits uh that would accrue uh to the Port Authority itself. Uh and of course, like I said before, there are wider impacts uh for the society and the community as a whole that Mr. Foster uh would have alluded to. The, this is my first town hall meeting and um the, I'm sure that at the end we'll be afforded the opportunity uh for uh for for questions. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. O'Garrow. That was quite comprehensive and we can see there is going to be some positive impacts for the port project, um for the Port Authority. Now, up next is Mr. Peter Wattenhofer. I hope I said that right. He is the project lead for Meridian Construction Company and he will give us, I suppose this might be the part most people want to see, is how far have we come on the project and where are we going next?
Oh, good afternoon, all. See some familiar faces out there. I, uh, today we'll focus a little bit more on the construction and the status where we are. I know in the past, we've talked a lot about the design and we've talked a lot about the the options that we're working through. As uh Glenroy mentioned, you know, the design is ready for uh IFC, which is issued for construction. So the design team in Houston is about to issue those drawings and packages to us. So for us, we're we're out of the design phase now and moving into the procurement and construction. What we have here to talk about the the status and and obviously was alluded to with the dredging is uh behind me is the uh drawing of the the dredging and that's the design drawing. What we've managed to do with the Elba is the area, maybe this has a pointer, does it? This this area here was liquefaction area, so we we dredged down to about minus eleven minus twelve meters chart datum. And that was successful there. We've now got to replace that material with competent material to build the structure on top. Um with the Elba, she didn't quite get into this corner. It's quite tight for her. So we'll come back with another grab dredger and finish that off. But she managed to take out a fair chunk of the approach channel here and and dredge that. There's some complications we have here with some uh surface boulders and potentially some some rock that's going to be below the surface. So again, we'll deal with that with a grab dredger that will mobilize shortly. And what the Elba has also managed to do is in the center of the project site here, she's actually dredged a a pit for us. So the works that we have to do with the grab dredge, that's a bit more of a slower process, is the grab dredger will just have to either side cast into that pit or with a split hopper barge, the split hopper barge will move material to that pit. So the the vast majority of material that needed to be taken from Little Bay and deposited uh at Plymouth has has been moved. There might be some some small quantities, but the majority has been been completed. Uh with the existing pier, a- as we uh mentioned last time, the, again, the bulk of that uh material here has been removed. There's some small areas in the corner that we'll uh we'll remove with the grab dredger as well. And then we'll have our vessel, the Gulf Meridian, which should be on station in the coming weeks. We've actually just sent our our plant manager to BBI to to make the final plans for her to start sailing. Uh she will come with a special beam and she'll start to drag across that that across the seabed and level the seabed out. So for us, the the dredging, we've we've broken the back. There's still work to be done with the dredging, but the Elba came and uh and did her work. There was some complications with the Elba and the material we encountered, but the crew on board managed to tackle that and and push forward. Uh moving on to land, and it's a little bit nicer to to move on to land because you actually see what's what's happening. It's it's in the water. It's always a little bit complicated. Is this is our, this is Piper's Pond. This is our pre-casting area. So you can see our slabs here that we've cast and they've been there for a few months now. We're now starting, you can't see too clearly here, but these are wooden forms and we're calling them the kickers. And what the kickers do is they ga- give us the shape of the caissons at the bo- at the bottom. For lack of better terminology, the caissons are very similar to Lego blocks. So when you see a Lego block, you've got the the top part, you've got the bottom part and they connect together, very similar to the caisson. So the the team here, they've made this this formwork to match the design for the bottom of the blocks that will be cast out of concrete. And then we have on the way from the USA, this formwork system here. This will sit on top of the of the kickers and this will start being the shape of the uh of the caisson units that we'll make. So th- these caisson units are about four meters by uh about six, six and a half meters. So we'll start to see uh in the coming months that they'll be produced in Piper's Pond and we'll start to store them and start transporting them around to to the site. Next slide we have here, I mean, there's a bit of work now going on site that people can see. I've just explained that. There's also the the dredging we explained earlier. There's also a lot of work going on overseas that obviously a lot of us, even on the project team, we don't get to see. And obviously yourselves as a public don't get to see either. So this is a little bit of an insight to uh specialized stone spreader. I know we talked about it last time, but this is fabricated in Holland. It's been tested in Holland. It's actually on the on the water at the moment, sailing towards Saint Martin. They'll be in Saint Martin in early October and we'll pick that up. What the the stone spreader is, it's a contraption that's about twelve meters uh long by about eight meters wide. Inside this hopper here goes a stone that we'll get from uh the local sand miners and it'll actually produce this this gravel bed here. So all the concrete units that we're producing, this this unit will sit on the seabed. It will be set to the right height. We'll fill it up with with local gravel and create a gravel bed so the concrete blocks can sit on the uh on on the the seabed correctly. Much the same as you lay blocks for the houses here, you make sure the the concrete foundation is is level and then you can lay your blocks on top of that. This is what this machine does. Um for a little bit of size, that's one of its legs there and that's obviously a size of a a full grown man. So this was quite a big piece of equipment. Um unfortunately, again, everything like subsea on top of these legs will have these light poles. They'll be about twelve meters uh tall and all we'll see from from the surface will be four prisms sticking above the water while this does its work subsea with with divers. So that that's been in the works for about six months, seven months. We've had it designed in Holland. We've had it fabricated in Holland and tested. We we had it painted as well. This is prior to it being painted and uh that'll be on site in the coming weeks. We'll we'll assemble that down in uh on the construction site. And then once the the corners of the dredges are tidied up, we'll deploy this and start creating the the gravel bed there. Alongside this, there's some other items that we're having fabricated at the moment and they've been designed again the last few months with teams we've been using in in Holland and also the the local teams here working with the the crews and and the supervision to come up with the best uh methodologies of installing the caissons. So thi- this here is a typical caisson unit and this is a specialized frame that can lift about forty-five ton. And this frame here has special uh legs that are hydraulic activated so they can open and close. So there's no need to put workers at risk when these uh these caissons are about three meters high. Have someone try and climb up the top of them with a ladder and try and rig them up. This will all be done automatically with hydraulics. And also when we place some subsea on top of each other, we can we can use the hydraulics to release the frame and we don't need divers to put themselves in danger in in between the uh caisson units. So again, these have been fabricated in Holland. The hydraulics are coming from uh from there and they'll be shortly on on site. On the right-hand side, this is a, as we'll call a survey tower. So these four points here, they will sit inside the caisson units and they'll project uh project themselves above the surface of the water. So again, much similar to the stone spreader, this survey tower will uh the only thing you'll see of it will be the top prisms and that will allow us to make sure the first caisson that goes onto that stone bed explained earlier is accurate to the right height, to the right position. So when we come out of the water with the pier, we can make sure that we're in the right direction and and the pier is within tolerance. So lo- lots of works off-site. I thought, you know, important to share with yourselves that there are, there is a lot going on. We are mobilizing equipment from Europe, from the US. This is just a snippet of some of the specialized equipment that we've designed and purchased for the project. The next slide we had here, there there's two items to talk about. The first being the on-island training that was undertaken. So we uh invited a trainer from Trinidad, who's a certified trainer, and he came and and gave training on cranes and rigging, operations of loaders, of trucks, et cetera. Uh part of our, part of our commitment is to upskill the labor force we have here, the labor force we brought in as well. So he'll most, more than likely be coming back in November, December. We'll work with the government to see what other uh training we can give to others on the island. We'll probably have another Women and Youth in Construction Day. The the trainer heard about the the day that we had earlier and he would like to contribute. So we're going to work with him to try and find ways that he will deliver um some free training sessions to those that would like to be certified in some of the equipment. So that that was nice that he appreciated uh, you know, the the efforts that have been made on the island. The next photo we have here, which is Piper's Pond, explained a little bit earlier about these, the casting units, which we'll start to use now, or pads, that will start to create the caisson units on. The concrete batch plant has uh arrived from Turkey and is being put together. As Glenroy said, we've got some technicians coming from Turkey to uh commission this for us and and finish off the assembly. Uh in next week, we'll have these areas here for the aggregates and sand filled up with the sand and aggregate needed for the uh the concrete uh part of the project. And then in the center here, this is where we'll we'll uh store our cement. So our cement will come in bulk of bags, the bags about a meter by a meter and have about one and a half ton of cement in each bag. So we'll use uh use those bags. We'll first store them in the area here and then just just in front of these water tanks here, there'll be two fifty-tonne silos which will then store the cement and then we can feed directly into the uh the batch plant. Um on on to site, again, two things to talk about here is the first is the Women in Construction, which we we've talked about, Glenroy mentioned. That was a successful day. It was also nice for for ourselves to give something back to the community. I know the guys involved and the workforce we had involved in monitoring the equipment. We're excited about it and, you know, enjoyed doing something other than just uh working, but to give give something back and and show people how to drive some of the equipment that we drive every day. And then the next part, Mr. O'Garrow discussed this. This is the quarry here that we're currently quarrying. So the intent is, this is the first cut here and we'll start removing all this material here, which should give the uh the port usable space for biosecurity, for the police, for port health as well. So a- as we push the pier out, the causeway out, we'll continue to quarry that material. And by the end of the the project, the intent is to have a surface that's the same height as the surface that is there and uh the port can use for uh for future uses. Uh next we have is the causeway that we've pushed out. We're just waiting to build a a stockpile of coastal protection, so filter rock, armor rock, and we'll start putting in the permanent coastal protection. So the the permanent coastal protection is, you know, similar to this rock that you've got here, is that we'll build up a a permanent slope here with the the rock that will stay in position. And then we'll start to look to put our uh start of the, what we call the coastal or the seaweed coastal protection on the outside here. And that way, with, once we have that set, we do the dredging, then we can start the RORO and start installing the first caisson blocks. So just a few key steps steps for us. As I mentioned earlier, the issuance of the IFC package for the designers. So that is imminent for us. We've been working on that for about a year. And, uh, you know, we've changed the design from a steel sheet pile and piles to a caisson which uses the, you know, local labor and and local material where we can. We're starting to receive permanent materials, so we've got some coastal protection material that's uh coming up to the job site at the moment to be used on the on the causeway. We've got liquefiable material replacements, so what that is, is with the dredging, I said underneath the pier, we'll load that onto a split hopper barge in Plymouth and then that will come to site and we'll tip that. Again, you won't see anything. The the barge will open up at the bottom and the material will fall to the seabed. We've also got the gravel bed that will come from Plymouth that will be for the uh the stone spreader, as I explained, it will create that level level uh pad there for us to put the caissons on. Then the general fuel is coming from the quarry that we've created on site. There might be some balance that we'll need to get from Plymouth, but we'll deal with that. We also have arriving next week is uh aggregates barge. It will bring aggregate and sand to us. Uh rebar will come from uh the US in the coming weeks along with some concrete admittances and the cement from Puerto Rico as well. So that will be here in the next ten days. So we'll start to see some activities and materials arriving to the construction site. We've just started to order the marine furniture and when we say marine furniture, you know, Mr. O'Gara has mentioned about the bollards and the fenders. So we're looking at, obviously, the priority is the the pier and and the both the fenders and bollards there. Also, the existing pier, we've been asked to increase the scope a little bit there with some additional fenders and bollards and see what we can do to uh standardize all the fenders and bollards, include something for for Plymouth as well. So the the team's working through through that to see how we can assist. Uh one of the next key steps, I mentioned that earlier, was the tidying up of the dredging. So we have a grab dredger. We're just in contact with the subcontractor now to see when we can uh can mobilize them and the replace of that liquefiable material, which I discussed. Causeway, placement of the permanent coastal protection. So again, that's imminent. Once we get a stockpile of material, we'll begin that. We've got the geotextile, which is a material that goes underneath a rock. That's on on island at the moment and that material will stop all the fines washing out. We'll place that first and place a rock on top of that. Uh there'll be more equipment uh that you'll see on on the island in the coming weeks. I've mentioned the stone spreader. I've mentioned the the formwork, uh concrete trucks that will arrive and then the temporary works, which was a selection of what I showed uh showed earlier. Uh at the moment, we're onboarding additional labor. So at the moment, between uh two to three people every week, we're onboarding with the with the project. And that's why we're looking at in November, we'll do some additional training to make sure those people get the opportunity to be upskilled and and provided with some training as well. So we have, we've got a lot of applications that people have filled out and given to us at the office. We're using it as a as a reference, as a as a library and we're going through and starting to contact those people that we want to come in for an interview and then employing those people. And then, uh, as Glenroy mentioned earlier, we, you know, the environmental monitoring, controls, the social agenda, that's uh continued to happen and will continue for for the remainder of the job. But I I think in summary, I know I've talked a lot about a lot of a lot of items is we're coming out of the design phase. We're we're through the, going through the procurement phase at the moment and the construction phase will will start in the coming weeks. Where you start to see the caissons built. Once the caissons are built, before the end of the year, you'll start seeing us placing some caissons in the water. Unfortunately, the first caissons and the stone, the gravel bed, you'll just see the crane putting things back in the ocean. You won't see anything raising out of the the ocean for a while. And then uh early next year, we'll finish off the RORO and uh the RORO being, I don't know if I've got any drawings here, but the the RORO, when we talk about that, there there's a wall that's going almost east-west and we'll complete that wall first and then say uh towards March, April, then we'll start the pier and start building out the main pier as well, so. That's what I have, Ross. Pass it back. Perfect.
Thank you very much, Peter. I know that was quite comprehensive and you would have noticed over the past few months that they've actually extended the time between the town halls and that is because they're now going to be doing them quarterly. So to make up for that, they have created a dashboard that you'll be able to access online to get regular updates as to the status of the project. And Glenroy, you're going to walk us through that? You get to see it first.
So as Nerissa was saying, this information um is being produced. This information is being produced as a way for us to communicate with all our stakeholders, all residents on Montrat and those abroad. And we're looking to provide information on a timely basis. So every month, this information will be updated and this is our first dashboard, our first production of information. So it's producing, my voice is very different. So it is producing information that is seen from the beginning of the project up until now and highlighting key aspects of it from employment to social interactions, engagements, both the focus groups, the town halls and key steps within the project. So these will be made available on our social media platforms as well in the future on the the government page. Um so does anybody want me to play it again or we'll be free to define me?
All right, thank you. So social media, it will be the Ministry of Comms, um Works and Labor's Facebook page will have the updates. Now, we want to get into, opportunity for you to ask your questions because, again, you can unpack everything that was uh presented here today. There's a microphone in the center. For those of you watching online, I see there are quite a few people on YouTube. Thank you for joining us and feel free to put your questions in the chat. We would love to share them with the audience. First up, Mr. West. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, I think I'm going to come back again, but I wanted to establish for clarity something that Mr. Foster said that was just contradicted by the gentleman from Meridian just now. that Mr Foster said that was just contradicted by the gentleman from Meridian just now. Mr Foster said earlier, if I'm not mistaken, Mr Foster, Mr Foster said the project will be finished in April of 2024. Did you not? The gentleman just now said that they're going to do this, do that, do the other. They're going to finish the roll on roll off and they're going to start the, the pier in March or April of next year. Just want some clarity on that, please.
The, the schedule's currently being updated at the moment. And there's some commercial discussions that have been, been held, which have been held with a smaller party, but the, the project is pushing out towards the third quarter of next year. And that's something that's got to be shared with the, the wider project team and, and to go, go through the steps that we have to go through with the, the commercial discussions.
Twenty twenty four. You said you will start building the pier in April of 2024.
Yeah. And I've just given you an answer. And I've told you that the project is being pushed out to the third quarter of next year.
And you're saying that the government representatives don't know that coming here this afternoon?
I'm saying there's discussions ongoing at the moment and there's discussions going on at a higher level, discuss some commercial items that have been discussed. And it's not information that's gone out to everyone at this stage. So I think that was an honest mistake. And at this stage, we're forecasting towards the third quarter of, of next year.
It is very disappointing that you're coming here and giving conflicting information, but be that as it may.
For, for clarity, Mr West, and as Mr, as Peter would have pointed out, from a contractual aspect, the project is slated to finish on the 18th of April, 2024. Discussions are being had and until those agreements have been made, the contract data stated is April 2024. And that's the information that was provided. So it's not that, it is contradictory. As stated, this, as stated, discussions are being had. So until the final agreement has been made, schedules updated and all that, that information cannot be released otherwise as the data is stated.
With the greatest of respect and without belabouring the point, if the contractor is sitting here and telling us that he's going to start building the port in April 24, 2024, you cannot be telling us that the port is going to be finished in April 2024. That, how does that work? The man who is building it say he's not going to start until April and you're saying it's going to be finished? At least you should, you should have said, you don't know. I, I would, I could live with that. If somebody doesn't know something and there's questions to be answered and what, I could live with that. But don't keep saying that it's going to be finished April 24th, when we already know that it's not.
Just make your way to the microphone, please.
Good afternoon. We see a lot of activity going on at the preparation site at Piper's Pond. But I and others thought that by now, we'd be seeing some activity out on the water itself. And I, I share the concerns of Mr West because when I heard Mr Foster say that the project will be finished in 2024, I wondered because 12 months or almost 12 months have already gone and we're left with another five or six months. I mean, I see anything, activity out on the waters yet. So my question is, will there be significant cost overrun? That's one of my questions. And the other question that I have is, I wanted to know how many locals are working on the project at this time?
Good day, everyone. The first part of the question I, I would seek to respond to, but Peter would be able to respond in terms of, in terms of how many locals on the project. In terms of cost overrun, that is not a, a response that we can give at this time. It's somewhat early days, but like any project, you have to prepare yourself for eventualities. Okay. So yes, we can expect cost overrun. How much it is, we don't know. Who will be liable for the overruns? That is a question we can't answer at this time as well. We know projects, projects are dynamic and many things can happen. And just to clarify again, in support of what Mr Foster indicated, contractually on paper, what we have as the project end date is April 2024. Until there's an agreement on that for that to be signed and agreed by the government of Montserrat and the contractor, then as a government representative, it will be, you know, unresponsible for us to report. Otherwise, yes, I do agree that clarity should be given that the project is currently experiencing delays and we can expect the project to, to finish at a further date. All right. Thank you.
I can, can answer that. So at, at the moment, the, the project team is about 50/50 split of what we brought in as, as Meridian skilled labour or, or expats compared to locals. At the moment, I think we're talking about, top of my head, about 15 or so locals and 15 or so skilled labour slash expats. The number of locals will continue to increase based on the, the availability of the labour we can find on the island. Obviously, we need to ensure with the production of the caissons, that we have people that can either be trained or have the skills for pouring concrete, lifting rigging, especially when we're talking about lifting these blocks, they're 40, 45 tonne blocks. So, you know, imagine a standard car weighs a tonne, tonne and a half. You know, you're talking about lifting 35 cars at once. So we want to make sure we have the, the right people doing that, that activity. Obviously also some of the subsea work, we need to bring some specialised people in and et cetera. But at the moment, as I mentioned, we're, we're at this stage, we're hiring between about two to three local Montserratians or residents of Mon- Montserrat per, per week at the moment. With regards to what's been happening in the last 12 months, I think people, people need to understand that this is an EPC project. So what that means is engineering procurement construction. So we got given a concept from Stantec, the government that was part of the contract and said, this is roughly what we want, this long and this position, this wide, et cetera, et cetera, with some allowance for us to use our judgement as a, as a contractor and a designer to find what's the most efficient way to build this project for the price that we gave. So when we arrived here, we're finishing off the geotechnical studies, had to go to laboratories, we had to wait for that to look at the design. We've had designers in Holland, both for geotechnical and temporary works and constructibility. We've had a design team in Houston and also Seattle, and they've been working through that. We did make a decision to change the design and going from, from steel design to a full concrete gravity structure design, which we think, you know, improved the environmental impact of the project by removing pile driving on the project, by allowing us to fabricate the caissons on island and also remove any potential risk with, you know, rocks, cobblestones, boulders, et cetera, that we, we knew there was a hard layer of, of rock there and that we wouldn't be having any issues with the sheet pile. So we had to work through that process as well. Alongside of that, we're looking at the procurement, where we can get things, how we can build it. So it's a little bit of a holding hand of those three items. And as I said, we've got to the stage where the final design is going to be submitted. We've gone through the procurement and the, those items will start to arrive. There are still some procurement of marine furniture to do. And then we're, we're going to start up the construction in the coming months. So you'll see more and more happening on the island. And that was intention of showing some of the temporary works that are happening overseas to let you know that while there's not a lot being seen on the moment on the island, that's what we'll be seeing in the coming months, there is a lot happening overseas at the moment. And all that material, all that equipment and temporary works needs to come to the island. And obviously, as you guys know, they're better than ourselves. When we bring something here, we need to make sure it's working, it's functioning. We've got the spare parts, we've, we've got service kits because we, we can't get a lot on the island. So we made sure, I like with the stone spreader, that it was built, it was tested, you know, we, we weighed it up with weights to make sure that it was, it was going to work and not that we got it to the island, put it together and found out there was issues.
Captain John?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Yes, go ahead.
Okay. My question is for, I have two questions, but the main, the first one is for Peter, Meridian and Stantec. How do they plan to compensate the people of Montserrat for the environmental disaster that happened last week, Monday, with the Nazis washing that shawl and stones down into the water? Now, our coral reefs have suffered sufficiently with the volcano and the few reefs we have are now being inundated by the, the shawl that they have dug from the hillside, that they just rolled on top of stones with no security facer wall or anything to stop the nodly seas coming in. Tonight here, we hear that they're not going to start construction of the roll on roll off and the wharf before April, May of, March, April of next year. Now, from this month, September, until April, May, we're going to get continuous nodly seas. The nodly seas that we experienced last Monday were six feet high. In December, they come up to 10 and 12 feet high. As it was, they were scrambling to get their excavators and loaders and boats off there where they had pressed down. Now, the whole water looked like when Bellem runs down. It was nasty, environmental disaster. And what plans do they have to stop this happening in the future? Because they took out the, the silk boom that they had that was designed to hold the stuff in. I know the seas were rough, but it's, it's supposed to be properly moored. Okay? They took it out because they did not want it damaged. Well, which is the worst damage? The damage to our environment or the damage to the, the silk boom? Right? So what I'm saying is sooner than later, because I have warned about this in previous times, the nodly seas are, are going to be here. It's not that they, they might come, they will be coming. And we, when they get bigger, all that shawl that they have pressed into the stones there will be completely washed away. And even the stones will get washed away and go back into where they just dredged in the past month. Right? So what happened now is that they have to do something to retain that, that causeway for future damage before they start doing actual concrete work. The next thing is that I would, I'm calling on Mr Ogaro from the port. The Stantec and Meridian have equipment here. There is what I, I call the kiddie pool that was built about 10 years, eight years ago. Right? And it is a disaster and there are pieces of concrete and with steel sticking out of them. And the rocks that they put there in the perimeter of it have washed out and now the whole of that kiddie pool is, is now full of stones. So kids who go in there, and people, adults and so forth, who don't like to go into the sea water in front of Sokka Cabana and so forth because of the dip, they can't get back out. The waves pull them back down and they fall down. That is a good place for people, senior citizens, handicapped people to go and swim. And what I called the governor's office and they said, it's, the, the port authority is in charge of that specific thing.
Okay. So your question is, would Port Authority be willing to, and, and Meridian to work to fix it?
They can get Stantec, Meridian to clear it out and put a proper secure cement device there and pave in on the shoreline part of it. So people who are handicapped can drive right in front of it, come out and they take their walker or wheelchair and go into the water. Right? Now, they have caused an environmental disaster last week, Monday, and more is there to come. And some kind of compensation got to come, whether it be cash or labour, and let them do something good for the island. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. So the first question is, what is going to be your response to the, to the damage that was caused? And also, are you all willing to replace or fix the, the kiddie pool that was in front of Marine Village as part of that?
Firstly, you know, what happened last week, we were aware of the seas coming in and it was knowing that there would be some washout and be some, some damage done, minor damage done to the causeway. A lot of the area went back into where, where the dredging occurred, where we'd been, we disturbed the seabed, we removed the corals that either be relocated or unfortunately destroyed through the dredging. So it was aware, it's the same around the rest of the world where we build these projects that when we're pushing into the water, we do lose some, the sea does take some. And it's, it's a balance of ensuring we push out and we're getting ready for the permanent works. As I said just, just prior, we're starting the, the stockpiling of that coastal protection, that stone there. And it's imminent that we'll start to put the permanent coastal protection in front of the, the causeway. So in the coming weeks, you'll see the excavators working there and getting that in place. We're waiting for the arrival of the geotextile material, which has now arrived, and we'll start to place that material. The, the date about the pier is what we call the pier arm itself, the 130 metre section. That's what's going to start, you know, end of first quarter, start of second quarter next year. In between there, we'll be building the row row and we're starting to protect the, the outside of the, the row row facility as well with the seaweed coastal protection. So that, that's our position with that. With regards to the rock pool, we've already been requested by the government as a community support. Could we help clean it up? So depending on how the project goes, the support we get from the community, that's something we'll look into on the availability of our equipment as well, is to tidy that area up because your concerns that you raised have been raised with us as well. And with our long reach excavator, it's a unique machine that is not available in Montserrat. We could, we can do some work there and tidy that, that rock area up. And that's something we committed to already a few months ago to the governor when it was requested. We've also committed to the police commissioner that we build a, a lifeguard tower. We've also put boys out there to protect the swimmers in that area. So I think as Meridian, we are doing a lot for the community and we're ensuring we're following our plans and our commitments under the contract as well.
Thank you, Peter. Another question, you mentioned, Peter, I think you did, about the caissons starting to be placed later this year. How is that going to, could, is that going to be impacted by the northern seas that we expect? Is that going to delay you further?
That, that is something of his concern. As you said, it could get up to 10 feet and that, that does cause some concerns. We have to be smart about where we place it. We have two rows of caissons we have to place. So we always try and place the caisson that's on the outside to provide us some shelter for the caissons we're placing on the inside. Fortunately, a lot of this work is subsea. So once we get through the swell and we get below that, you know, we, we can, we can deal with it a little bit more easily. Also, the design of how we've designed these caissons is they can be a little bit rougher in how we place them with the bigger key design. And the crane will actually sit on top of the caissons we, we place. So the big advantage to that, as you see with the video that was played earlier on about the swell and the vessels and the barges, when they move around and it's, it's very difficult to lift when a barge is moving like that, we'll be actually on top of the caissons on a stable platform. So we've tried to open the, the window of placing those caissons as much as we can. Yes, there will be days when the weather will be too severe that we can't get divers in the water, we can't get the caissons in the water and we'll have to stop. But we have to be smart about always trying to provide ourselves with a shelter. So when we build the row row, we'll start the row row structure on the west side. So naturally, we'll get a breakwater as we start heading, heading east for the same reason as we've had a lot of support from the locals informing us about these seas that come between September and March. And, you know, try and not fight against the seas, but try and work, work with them and try and protect, provide protection for ourselves so we can keep the construction going.
Does anyone else have a question? Go ahead, Mr West.
This, this is not my question. So don't call me as, as coming it back. It's a question that somebody sent to me by WhatsApp. Person couldn't be here because gas is now over $20 a gallon. That's, that, well, I don't know. That's what he told me. So he said, I got some, I'm reading, okay? I got some disturbing news. It's bad enough that the port project has rejected Montserrat sand and is importing instead at a tremendous expense, especially when quite a few other islands are using Montserrat sand for their port project. Secondly, they have chosen sand from the Dominican Republic, which I am told has a farmer's plague, the African snail. I just wanted, the person wants you to comment on that. You, you've already said that the Montserrat aggregate is not good enough for you to build the caissons. I remember that from a previous meeting. That's correct, right? That's correct, right? So the person is saying that they are, they're understanding now that you're importing the aggregate from the Dominican Republic. So his concern is, how are you going to mitigate against importing invasive species, I guess, such as the African snail?
So so that that is correct, and unfortunately, that was the way we we had to go with the contract. So we looked at the sand aggregates, everything that was available on the island. We did some local testing, we sent the aggregate sand to the U.S. to do some further testing and independent testing as well in in a laboratory there that was approved by a designer. Those results went to our designer and unfortunately, the the sand aggregate available wouldn't comply with the contract. And us as as Meridian, along with our designers, we we are responsible for a fifty-year design life. We're responsible to ensure that what we build lasts and doesn't get destroyed or crumple after five, ten years. So the the testing that we did and the advice of the designers, we had to go outside of Monstrat. We went around the whole of the Caribbean. I think one of engineers would have contacted probably fifteen quarries. Some quarries weren't available, that they didn't have the capacity to supply to us. Some quarries could, but their their test results gave us issues as well, so we couldn't go there. Um, and there was a number of of issues with the quarries we went to. The only quarry we found that had the supply and could meet the contractual requirements for for the aggregates and sand was Dominican Republic, and so we've chosen to go to them. We've gone up and done visits to see the quarry, to understand the quality of the product, to understand the quarry, the buyer's security. In our contract, there are certain requirements we have to make for monitoring and inspecting this material. The government have stepped up to the plate for additional controls, including spraying the spraying the aggregate, spraying the sand, putting some controls around the stockpiles that you will see when the aggregate arrives to ensure or to minimize as much as they can that we don't bring anything to the island. It's not our intent to bring any invasive species here. And I think the the program that we put together with the monitoring, with the spraying, with the controls around the spot, stockpile, will either identify and allow us to destroy those invasive species or will stop them from coming to Monstrat. And I hope that the plan that the government's put together with us and and what you will see over the coming weeks and coming months could be something that could be used for the port, can be used to inspect containers coming, the chemicals that have been used, the controls being used. We're also teaching the workforce what to look for. Giant African snail is one, there's a green iguana, there's a red palm mite, there's a few other species that we're we're looking at. And we've given the education to our workforce, which includes obviously Meridian skilled workers from other islands, but also Montrashians that live here, so that they they can understand what the invasive species are, what to look for and and how to control them.
Do you have another question, Mr. West?
Yes, I I do have another question of my own. I ju- just want to let the people who might be listening on the radio or on YouTube know that nobody else in the room is offering to ask any questions. So the fact that you see me coming to the microphone is not a question of me hogging the microphone. So I do have a number of questions.
Go right ahead.
And the opportunity is presenting itself for me to ask. Um, the other question I have, well, one of the other questions is regard to the dredging and the disposal of the material that was dredged. Question one, why was all of it dumped at sea? Wasn't there an opportunity to stockpile some of it? Because sand is quite a precious resource. Why was all of it just carted away and dumped at sea? Couldn't some of it have been blown back up onto the shore for future use? And by virtue of the fact that you've now essentially dug a trench in front of the beach where the sand used to come from, go into the water at certain times of the year, and other times of the year it's washed back up and the beach gets built back up. In my mind, as a layperson, I am thinking that if you've dug now a trench just offshore, when the seas come that take the sand out, it will fill that trench. Is there any guarantee that the sand will then come back? Are we about to lose the Little Bay Beach? And let me put a caveat in here just to let people know, I am not against the port development, far from it. And sometimes development have to make sacrifices, but I just want to know. We don't want to wake up next year and all of a sudden the beach is not there and we're wondering, well, how come? If we see something happening now, we need to tell the people, expect this in the future. If all the sand gets washed out, it goes into, how deep was the trench that you've dug out there? Yeah, so so very deep. So in my mind, I'm thinking, once the sand gets into that, it's not going to come back. So I'm thinking that we need to start looking at an al- an alternate place for people to enjoy a beach. And perhaps part of this, everything that we're doing here, we need to look at creating a better access to rendezvous as a replacement for Little Bay.
Do you have a question, do you have a response to that? Um, he needs to understand what the depth of that you've created in terms of the dred-
Wasn't there an opportunity to stockpile the sand rather than disposing all of it at sea?
So so to answer the the first part, we we did look at that because as contractors, we get paid a lump sum and any material we throw away is is potentially money for us. And we weren't able to reuse that material as backfill or anything else. We have taken the material from the existing pier that we we dredged out and placed in trucks. And we've been trying to use that for some of our site works. There were some rocks in there that we managed to reuse and as part of the causeway, the temporary coastal protection. So we have tried where where we could to to reuse it. Unfortunately, the the bulk dredging, we couldn't put that as part of the design. Actually, one of the issues that we've had is we had to excavate more sand underneath the existing pier because that sand, we're we're concerned that in an earthquake, that sand will liquefy and cause issues to the to the pier. So we've actually had to remove more because of the the unsuitability of of that sand. The second part of your question was, that's a study that I believe Stantec potentially might look at, it's not part of our scope. You know, yes, when you put a structure in front of a beach and you change your seabed, things will change. Um, for us, we we want to get our grab dredger in to do the detailed dredging and fill the hole that we've created for that that side casting. And then secondly is the hole that we've created under the pier to replace that with competent materials. So when we build the caissons, we've got competent material underneath that. But that that is something that has been discussed in past town halls, it's been discussed amongst the project. Unfortunately, it's not part of our EPC contract. I know the government, we're in discussions with Stantec to have a look at what sort of modeling they could do to give some some answers.
Correctly, you didn't go directly to it. But if I understand what you're saying correctly, is that there was a possibility of stockpiling that sand that was removed by the suction dredger? Right?
At at additional cost to the project, yes.
Right, so at additional cost, which which obviously, as somebody who's trying to make some money out of a contract, you weren't prepared to foot.
Yeah.
So so are we suggesting then, well, don't suggest it, I I could suggest it, we might have missed a trick? Government of Monstrat, the people of Monstrat, to stockpile all of those tons of sand that was taken from Little Bay on land someplace for future use? We might have missed a trick.
Well, it depends depends what you want to use it for. As I said, we've had to excavate more of the sand because of the fineness of it and the liquefaction concerns. So depending what you want to use it.
But this is exactly what I'm saying, it's fine sand, it's, that's the sand that we use for construction and rendering. Isn't it? That's the sand that comes up on the beach. So if you're taking that away, wasn't there an opportunity for stockpiling it for future use? I think I think that answer is yes.
You you have to look at for what and how to do that the costs involve, whether it's cheaper than sand mining, the salt water, et cetera, et cetera. So I think in a very high level, yes, you know, that that potentially could have been. But I think if you start looking at the details, where to stockpile, at the cost of stockpiling it, the cost of of the of the dredging vessel being here, I think it would have been very quickly shown that the economic benefit would have been very, very minimal or actually costly.
I I I don't accept that. You know why I don't accept that? If it'd been quickly shown, it should have been shown. The mathematics should have been done. You just a cost benefit ratio, obviously, I I don't expect you to lose the money. But it's somewhere, there should be a document that says the cost of stockpiling that sand would have been cost prohibitive.
And and this is a question for the for the government.
Why shouldn't just be a a back-of-the-envelope calculation and just throw it away?
Well, in 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 our contract, it's very clear what we do with the dredge material. We take it to the Plymouth disposal site, and that's what we did.
No, be careful when you say Plymouth, you didn't take it to Plymouth, you took it to the-
Plymouth disposal site, so the old-
Ocean, in the ocean of Plymouth.
That's what we've called it, the Plymouth disposal site.
Right, okay, fine. Just just want a clarity.
I just wanted to add a bit bit to the discussion there with regard to the the sand disposal. So the sand was disposed at a site two kilometers off of Plymouth. Um, we actually had looked at the practicality as well of being able to stockpile that sand. First to comment, um, the ship that is dredging needed a draft of at least six meters. And it can rainbow the sand at about about thirty meters. So you would have to start looking at that. Where can the ship come in to a place that is at least thirty meters away from from a shoreline that has a draft of over six meters to be able to dispose the sand? That's one. Then also, we looked at it from an environmental standpoint as well. Um, you taking material from the seabed comes with different material as well. So you would have to look at that. How can that affect other things on land, um, looking at the salt content as well? Uh, yes, we do use this the 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 sand for for rendering, but we don't use it for actual structural construction as well. So you, we had to look at all of that as well as the cost benefit. And, you know, at the end of the day, we had to make the decision, dispose of that, of that material. Um, it was very clear in his contract as to what he should do with the sand that was um dredged. Uh, secondly, um, just want to respond and all your point with regard to invasive species and what the government is doing, actually, the government have sent inspectors to the Dominican Republic where the material is coming from as part of our our protocol to inspect the material and ensuring that they are are treating the material as they should, treating the equipment as they should before it arrives here. The material will be further treated as it arrives. And we have looked at other protocols, which include treatment, containment, and further inspection as we go along. But the point I really want to make tonight is that most of our Caribbean neighbors do have invasive species such as the African giant snail. And Monstrat has been blessed so far not to have that species. And so we would want to keep it that way as much as possible. And I'm happy the the project has been able to highlight the need for us to really be vigilant about that and to put steps in place because we do import on a weekly basis items from our neighboring island, islands that we know that have the African giant snail. And so I think it's an important point, we see it very seriously. Um, there are a number of things that steps have been put in place, including treatment of the vehicles, the trucks that will be transporting, ensure that they're covered, having the inspectors out at the hours when we know that the slugs and the various items are tend to, you know, want to wander about. Um, the importation of the appropriate type of materials or chemicals that will assist in in terms of eradication as well. Okay, so we are doing as much as we can to ensure that we keep Monstrat environment safe.
Um, I'd like, just Mr. Patterson, I'd just like to add on to what this gentleman said about the sand. You're from St. Vincent and you've seen how many hundred acres have been reclaimed in the building of the port in St. Vincent. And it's the the sand from the the ocean that they have pumped there onto the land to make new land. And they already did, they put sheet pile around and they built it and then they reinforced it. Um, so it's possible to dredge and put the sand on the land. And in St. Vincent, they're doing it hundreds of acres.
Yes, in in St. Vincent, that that's, that is the construction method that they they choose to. Um, our construction methods are 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 different as well as we, um, with our fragile ecosystem, we have to pay attention to our environmental safeguards.
I have a question from online. What is the current rate of siltation and sediment drift? What measures are put in place to address sediment drift and siltation during and after the completed port construction? Is that a question for you guys or Stantec? What is the current rate of siltation and sediment drift? What measures are put in place to address sediment drift and siltation during and after the completed port construction?
So just talk about during construction. So we have the silk curtains, as was mentioned earlier, that we have that in place, any in waterworks that are we doing where we disturb in the seabed or introduce the material, we'll put that silk curtain in to to reduce the the impact of of the silk. We also, when we're doing in-water works, we're also doing testing about a hundred or two hundred meters off where we're doing the works to to test that and to monitor that the the levels are remaining roughly the same, we're not doing any damage. With regards to siltation, I know Robert from Stantec has discussed it before, after the port project and about maintenance dredging. I think that's something that's been been looked into currently and maybe Ross can provide some more information there.
My my final observation, and it is only an observation, I'm just going to throw it up there, whatsoever will. I I know Mr. Foster is a trained engineer who is seconded from the Public Works Department, as is as is Mr. Patterson. I observed that they're now fixing the um the road on the Robert W. Griffith Highway right in front of the market. I also observed, as a layperson, that they're using a rather light roller to roll in that surface. And it immediately dawned on me as I passed this afternoon that the moment the trucks start to run on that surface, it is likely to deteriorate. Let me not say it will because I don't know, I'm not an engineer, see the two engineers up there smiling. It is likely to degrade that surface in very short order. So I I want persons to take note of that and start to think about who is going to replace it in the next three months.
Um, Mr. West, firstly, I would ask, um, what does the, well, you say is an observation. So how's the, what does that observation has to do with the the port project in particular? It says an observation that you have.
The port project is going to be using the road, the Robert W. Griffith Highway, to transport stuff from Piper's Pond to the Little Bay Port, correct? The port project had planned to build a temporary jetty in front of Piper's Pond and carry stuff from Piper's Pond to the port on barges. If I'm paying attention, that is no longer going to happen because they are going to travel on the road because the the building of constructing that temporary port was deemed to be no longer cost-effective. I'm paying attention, Mr. Foster.
So am I.
And I'm saying that any one of those caissons loaded onto anything and the wheels just go slightly, it's going to destroy the surface. Right? Even even a truck loaded with the fill material that they're carrying now is likely to be heavier than anything that the road is designed for. I'm just saying, and I'm not saying it definitively, I just, I'm just bringing it up now, and it's clear that you didn't think about it before.
Well, what I can say is that that we didn't think about it, that we did think about it before. Um, I think the best way to look at it is, we understand the requirements of of that road um in terms of the design. We will not say the road will not be able to withstand what you're implying that it won't withstand, and then it will disintegrate in short order. We anticipate that the road will be able to withstand some of the impacts that go in. And like every road, it's determined on the design criteria that is set for it. I know, I think I'll leave that to Peter to point out some of the mitigating measures that they want to implement in terms of transporting the caissons. But also what we, the road construction will do is also provide some ease to the traveling public going through that that area as they have been complaining considerably of the issues that are there. And though you may think that the the roller is light, as you pointed out, I'm paying attention to the words you use. Um, it is part of the design that is expected. And once all is done with the port construction and the works there, whatever deterioration that may or may not have developed, that will require some intervention, then that will be dealt with in the proper way that is required from an engineering perspective.
Thank you for that, thank you for your questions. We've come to the end of the town hall. Um, key points that we heard tonight would basically be that while contractually it is expected that the project is finished by April twenty twenty-two, um, the twenty twenty-four, where am I? Um, the Meridian Construction estimates that it's going to be into the third quarter before we think we we will see completion. So is that an additional six months we're talking?
No.
Yeah? If it's April 2022 and third quarter?
Sorry, Narissa, sorry, Narissa, I think we need to just hold Mr., what's your name, sir?
Peter.
Peter, he's a very generous gentleman, always answering the tough questions at the meetings. I forgot before, I was to hold his feet to the fire to ask him a very straightforward question that hopefully has a straightforward answer. If the actual construction of the jetty will not start until March, April of 2024, what is the estimated construction time once you start building that pier?
And let me just add to that, how many caissons, you had, what, fourteen pads, I counted?
Yeah.
Is it fourteen caissons or are you having to do multiple? How many caissons do you need to construct?
I don't have the exact numbers, the engineers have the details, but it's somewhere around two hundred and seventy-five, so it's quite a few. So a few points I wanted to point out is there was always going to be concrete trucks going from Piper's Pond to the construction site. And when we had a pile design, the piles would have been unloaded at Piper's Pond and they would have been trucked from Piper's Pond around to the construction site. So it's always been foreseen to have traffic between Piper's Pond and the construction site. Secondly is, again, when I say the pier, I mean the pier finger, the hundred and thirty metres. The whole job consists of the causeway of a row row, row row ramp, coastal protection. So I say the coastal protection will start imminently on top of what was already done as part of the permanent works for the causeway. In the coming month, we'll start the casting of the caissons. By the end of the year, we'll start placing the caissons for the row row. So the construction in water, in addition to the dredging and replacement, the liquefaction, et cetera, will have already commenced. When we come to the pier, yes, we look for that to start around March, April of the actual pier structure, the hundred and thirty metres. The row row will be there, the causeway will be there, there will already be some protection potentially given to the existing pier as well by that time, depending on which direction the sea comes into. And then we look from April to September to finish that placement of the blocks and also then the casting of the in situ concrete, placement of the bollards, placement of the fenders, et cetera, et cetera. That's our schedule.
So six, eight months?
Six months.
Peter, I have a question for you. When this wharf is finished, what does your company, what length of time guarantee are you offering with this pier?
So I have to look at the contract, there's normally a year warranty period normally in these contracts. Again, I have to have a look and see what's in here. But our design criteria and how we design things, back to the sand and aggregates, there's between fifty years and certain items, seventy-five years that we have to design it to. That design gets checked by StanTech, so StanTech doesn't work for Meridian. StanTech is a third party to the contract and they verify everything we design to ensure that you get the longevity out of the pier.
So is there something about parts of it?
No, parts of it, but the majority of it's built for fifty years, is designed for fifty years. So when we talk about design for fifty years, we look at the longevity, the corrosion protection, we look at the design loading of it, the wave loading, et cetera, et cetera, and that's what we design it for.
Thank you to everyone for your questions tonight, both in the auditorium and online. I'd like to say thanks again to Pastor Jeffers for opening the prayer and also the presentations from Mr. Glenroy Foster, Mr. Joseph Agaro, thank you for joining the team. Hopefully, we'll see you again at a future town hall. Mr. Peter, you didn't get too many tough questions tonight, so hopefully you'll come back. Peter Wattenhofer, thank you so much, and Mr. Patterson, thanks again. If you have any questions, please continue to utilize the information boxes around the island, including at the public library, and also share your questions and concerns on the Ministry of Communication and Works Facebook page and look out for their dashboard with the details on the jobs and the different opportunities that are coming up with the Monserrat Port Development Project. I am Narissa Golden. Thank you for joining us. Have a safe travel home.